And we have the tapes. Board requires a copy of the transcript. We'll break at about eight P M for deliberation of testimony. Heard this far in the conference room on the first floor. Public is invited to attend our discussion between board members and the public at that time. The new cases will be heard after nine P M. Red Bank City Board of Adjustment has maintained a policy cutoff hour nine seventy four hearing. Any applicants not heard this evening will be carried over to the next schedule. Uh, flagging the legion.
Flagging the legion to the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands by nation under God, invisible, with the nation's justice for all.
Then there is a lot of stuff I would have wanted, right?
And you know what? First of all, good evening and just for our new members, welcome. I think you'll enjoy it. And uh, perform a very important service. And just for the record, what Mr. Mass just read was the open public meeting statement. Uh, New Jersey has an Open Public Meetings Act, which says that a borough council, a planning board, and a zoning board can only meet in public uh, in a, in a duly advertised uh, setting unless there's an emergency. And and so that statement that he just read indicated that we had uh, the we as the zoning board printed notice of the the uh, meeting in two uh, borough, the two official newspapers and posted it at town hall and and all those types of things. So that basically is a legal requirement to say that we've complied with the legal requirement. So that's what that's about. Now, uh, Mr. Mass, I believe, uh, given this unique period in the borough's history, all members are to be sworn in. Um, and we can do this um, all at a time. Everyone can stand up and raise their right hands. And when I say I state your name, I'll just start down and we'll do one and you can all repeat after me if that's okay.
That sounds great.
All right. So if everyone can stand up and raise their right hands. And I am to state your name.
For savings.
Amanda Deremis.
Anna Cruz.
Ray Mass.
Aleni Makatron.
Paul Canio.
Anne Torre.
Sharon Lee.
Eileen Hogan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
A member.
A member.
Of the Red Bank Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Of the Red Bank Zoning Board of Adjustment.
According to the best of my ability. So help me guys. Kevin, do you have to just set for Aleni? Do you have to just set for Aleni? Just, yes, we'll do that. Good, good catch.
I think we could pick terms now.
Oh, okay. One other real quick thing. So another interesting uh, uh, chapter in our, in our new uh, borough uh, reorganized form. So typically zoning board member terms last for four years. And uh, but it starts, obviously, we're gonna have to do this, uh, just like the Borough Council did and just like the Planning Board did. We're gonna have to establish uh, someone uh, the terms. So of the alternates have a two-year term by statute. And the zoning board members have a four-year term. So Shawna, we are gonna pick out of that pretty box. And just so I know before we do it, we're going to say, uh, you're gonna pick and there's gonna be two people who are gonna pick four-year terms. There's gonna be two people that pick three-year terms, two people that pick two-year terms, and one person that picks a one-year term?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so right now, the only people who are going to pick are the
Regular members.
Are the regular members, because the alternate members have two-year terms. And then the only other thing that I would suggest, because the Borough Council is the appointing authority. And I think they sort of said, well, you guys figured out, I think, whatever we do, whatever we pick tonight and select, we should tell the Borough Council and have them, if they're inclined, to ratify it so that it's all official. And then, so now next year, there'll be, you know, usually in the future years, there'll only be two or three appointments up each time. And this is how we do it when we start anew.
Two years.
Two years, okay?
Um, because you guys are alternates, we're gonna have to do different.
All right, so Ray Mass.
Two years.
Two years. All right, Paul.
One year.
Okay.
So one.
Yeah.
Shawna, do they have to give the act back?
Oh, that's a bore, isn't it?
All right, Anne.
Four years.
Four years. Karen.
Three years.
Three years.
Three years.
Three years.
And uh, Shawna, is there one regular person missing? Oh, Ben.
Yeah, Ben's.
So why don't you pick for Ben's?
Ben's. Oh, no, you're gonna get, yes, four years.
Four years.
So now we have to do alternates.
Oh, because the alternate terms, everybody gets a two-year term, but because we're starting, we're gonna have two for two years and two for one year.
Yes.
It's usually not this much math during, during his only board meeting.
I'm so confused, no. You do another one here? One year? Or just scroll out?
No, but tomorrow, I'm not gonna be able to read my writing, so I'll have to call you guys.
Two years.
All right, so Anna has a two-year term.
One year for me.
Mr. Ramus, Amanda Deremis has a one-year.
Two years.
Mr. Haven has a two-year. And is there one alternate missing?
Gina.
And I'm assuming that's one year. Okay.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. We are been to the board. Start out with a chairperson, nomination for chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Ray Mass as chair.
All right, could I ask, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. And is there any other nominations for individuals to serve as chair? All right, so see that, I mean, if you could do a roll call vote.
Okay. So, bless it. First, everybody just, okay. Anne Torre.
Yes.
Or, Tori, sorry, Raymond Mass.
Yeah.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Um, Vincent White is absent. Paul.
Canio.
Canio.
Yes.
Anna Cruz.
Yes.
Amanda Deremis.
Yes.
Eugene Horowitz is absent. Chris Havens.
Yes.
And now, now we'll take nominations for vice chair.
Oh, I'd like to nominate Anne Torre.
A second.
All right, there's a nomination for Anne and a second. Are there any other nominations for?
First, uh, who was? Ray.
Ray, yes.
So, also.
Again, let me see, are there any other individuals to want, wanting to make a motion for someone to serve as vice chair for the upcoming year? All right, seeing none, so uh, there's a motion uh, for Anne Torre to serve as vice chair and we'll do a roll call.
Okay, Anne Torre.
Yes.
Raymond Mass.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Vincent White is absent, um, Paul Canio.
Yes.
Anna Cruz.
Yes.
Amanda Deremis.
Yes.
Eugene Horowitz is absent. Chris Havens.
Yes.
And now, Mr. Chairman, congratulations and congratulations to Anne. But Shawna, just for the remaining appointments, are we only?
Voting of first seven.
Are we only taking first seven?
First seven.
Okay.
Okay, for the board secretary. And um, what's? What's your name?
Aleni.
Aleni, board secretary. Second.
I'll second it.
And the second.
Yes.
Anne Torre.
Yes.
Raymond Mass.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Paul Cagnon.
Yes.
And Anna Cruz. And Anna Cruz, sorry. Yes.
Congratulations. Next we have for board attorney. Um, I nominate Kevin.
A second.
I need. Anne Torre.
Yes.
Raymond Mass.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Paul Cagnon.
Yes.
Anna Cruz.
Yes.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all. Um, I've been fortunate to be the board attorney here for a number of years and I'm still very honored um, and very excited to have the appointment. I look forward to all, to working with you. Uh, particular my veteran friends and my new friends. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Next, board engineer. Somebody want to make that?
I'll nominate T and M.
I'll second.
I think it's first. Second. Anne Torre.
Yes.
Raymond Mass.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Uh, I'm gonna abstain from this vote, uh, due to potential conflict of interest.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Um, Paul Cagnon.
Uh, yes.
Anna Cruz.
Yes.
And then call another person. Okay, Amanda Deremis.
Yes.
Okay, next, next we have the official newspaper. I think we've typically done.
Asbury Press. Asbury Press.
At first part, right, certainly.
River.
River time.
And Starling.
And our letter. And and just for the record, uh, when we do a special meeting notices, we only have, we have to put things in two newspapers. When the applicants come forward tonight, and I'm gonna talk about this in a moment, when the applicant comes up, they have to notice in one newspaper. And uh, anyway, the reason uh, we're picking the third newspaper, uh, we, we started this about two years ago during COVID. Because when we were having a lot of cancellations and special meetings because of the COVID restrictions being in effect and not in effect. Um, the Star Ledger had a more uh, inviting timeframe as to when you had to advertise. They're more expensive, so we just sort of have them the, in our pocket to, if we ever need it. So this would be designated in these three newspapers as the official newspapers. And Shawna, just so that everyone's unclear, or if everyone is clear, these three newspapers, at least the two of them, are the same as the borough and the same, that the borough designated it and the same that the plan were designated.
Yes.
Okay, next we have a conflict.
Well, generally, we have to have a vote on the.
On the newspaper, yeah.
We can do all in favor.
We can do it all in favor.
If someone would make the motion to name those.
I'll name the three newspapers.
Okay.
Have a poll in favor.
All right.
I think.
All vote. Okay. Next we have a conflict uh, board attorney.
So in the, in the past, Mr. Chairman, what we have done is we've appointed uh, Mark Lexstein to serve as conflict attorney. I typically don't have conflicts, but whether it's a scheduling conflict or an actual conflict, uh, Mark's firm also represents the planning board. So I would respectfully submit it's a natural um, selection, but it's, of course, only if it's uh, uh, acceptable to the board.
I, not wait. I nominate.
Mark Lexstein.
Mark Lex.
I'll second.
All favor.
All right.
I.
That one, I'm sorry for that one, because there's actually money involved. We have a roll call vote on that one.
And Torre.
Yes.
Raymond Mass.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Paul Cagnon.
Yes.
Anna Cruz.
Yes.
Okay, and the other one we have is for the board engineer.
For conflict board engineer. In the past, you have, and I, I, I heard earlier that there was a desire to maybe name CMA as conflict engineers.
We've had them in the past, so. I can make a motion to have CMA as a conflict engineer. So I can.
Second.
Anne Torre.
Yes.
Raymond Mass.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Paul Cagnon.
Yes.
Anna Cruz.
Yes.
Are we all done now?
Yep, that's sort of done, the reorder.
Okay, we're all, we're all done with the reorder and we'll get into.
Uh, for everyone that's up here on the day, it's, um, only three mics can be on at the same time, so just make sure that you turn off your mic if you're not speaking.
Okay, good, I'm to regular agenda. Uh, we have a meeting, uh, from June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, only the members that were present for that meeting. Who? Jews. All.
I believe it was. Hope to.
Okay. Rock. Turn off.
Actually, I.
Got a nominee.
I make a motion to approve that as minutes.
Second.
Okay, Anne Torre.
Yes.
Raymond Mass.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
I wasn't here for that.
Oh, she's abstained. Okay. And Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Uh, we have seventy-eight Bridge Avenue, which is being carried.
Yes, if I could just state a couple of things. Uh, so, uh, ladies and gentlemen on the board, uh, we were going to hear Shawna, this is the applicant, her name is, right, applicant, I'm sorry, American Opportunity Zone Fund LLC, seventy-eight Bridge Avenue. Uh, they received um, uh, a review letter from the board engineer. And I think that they're asking to make some revisions. They need some time to make the revisions to address some of the concerns that were apparently uh, raised in the board engineer's review memorandum. So just so you know, the applicants previously noticed uh, to come here, they have to notice every um, every property owner within two hundred feet of the development site. And they have to put it, an advertisement in the newspaper. And so they're asked to be carried without the need for any further notice. So I always say, is there anyone here tonight on the American Opportunity Zone Fund application? Uh, I don't see any, but for the record, if you are here, please come back. This application is being carried, Shawna, until
Fifth of September.
September seventh, two thousand twenty-three, with, uh, at six thirty P M without the need for any further public notice. And one last important thing is our New Jersey municipal land, you saw, has a somewhat um, bit of a, a process that says if an application is not adjudicated in a certain timeframe, there could, under certain circumstances, be a potential automatic approval. And uh, obviously, an automatic approval is the worst thing for any of us. And and so whenever we're adjourning a matter, we always get the applicant to consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act, so we avoid any public approval. Now, this applicant's attorney is Edward McKenna. I spoke with him and sent him a confirming letter that he did in fact confirm and consent to extend the timeframe. So we're, we have no automatic approval issues. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, if we could have a motion to carry this uh, uh, American Opportunity Zone Fund meeting to September seventh, two thousand twenty-three without the need for any further public notice.
All right, motion to carry.
Second.
Sharon, second. Anne Torre.
Yes.
Raymond Mass.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Paul Cagnon.
Yes.
Oh, Anna. Anna Cruz.
Yes.
Okay, move on to uh, one twenty-one Dr. James Parker Boulevard Lunch Break Corporation.
Okay, and as the applicant's attorney comes forward, uh, this is gonna do a couple of preliminary procedural things, if it's okay. So first off, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? Okay, come on forward. And then this would just be questions about the notice, not questions about the application per se, that we'll get to momentarily. So what's your name?
Oh, um, James McKean.
Okay, and did you have questions about the notice or about the application?
Yes, more about the application.
Okay, so what we do, don't, yeah, it will just hold on for a little bit and and we're gonna come back to you. There's gonna be an opportunity. So did anyone have any uh, concerns about the notice? Okay, so uh, let the record reflect that the board, uh, actually, it was before uh, uh, Eileen's arrival. So Shawna and I reviewed the notice and we found everything to be in order, so it would be my humble opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed. And the reason that that's important is if the notice was not sufficient, meaning they didn't notify all the people within the two hundred feet. Or they uh, didn't give clear information as to what they were looking for and what time the hearing was or what date the hearing was. If there's a problem on that end, we don't even have jurisdiction to proceed. So anyway, I, I, I do think we have jurisdiction to proceed. I think the notice was sufficient. And what we'll do is we'll mark into the record what we as a board have before us as evidence. And we usually just start thing, mark things A for applicant, A one. So the first A one, we're gonna mark is the intent to proceed dated May ninth, two thousand twenty-three. A two is the signage package, and that's uh, dated April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It's consisting of one sheet. And it's prepared by Kalini Johnson Wagner Architects. And A three is gonna be uh, Shawna Evans' review memorandum dated July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And and board members on some of the uh, bigger projects, the board engineer will do a review letter. And on some of the smaller and medium-sized projects, uh, Shawna does, does a review uh, memorandum. So that's um, and now we're gonna turn it over to uh, the applicants. And this is Rick Brodsky, he's the applicant's attorney. And he's going to uh, elicit and solicit testimony information, which is going to um, he's going to try to convince you, convince you to vote to grant them the request of variances. And the burden is on him to, to um, satisfy the legal standards and uh, to have you, you know, give you the necessary testimony information. And Kevin, if I could just say one really quick thing, what we have historically done, doesn't mean we have to do it all the time, but what we have historically done, which most boards do, uh, Mr. Brodsky will typically give a introduction statement and then he'll call his first witness. And then you all have questions any time of that witness. And then uh, you open it up to public uh, questions of that witness. And then if Mr. Brodsky had a second witness, we'd do the same. And then we have, uh, the chairman will make a request to have any public comments. Uh, and that's when the public can scan up and say, we love it, we don't like it, we'd like it better if this and all that. So that's the general process, and I know I'm throwing a lot of stuff at uh, all the new members. And I think you will learn exponentially at your next meeting. You're gonna a hundred percent more and the next meeting a hundred percent more. And then you will be experts in very short time. So against that, good evening, Mr. Brodsky.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Mr. Chair Member Sephora, Rick Brodsky, on behalf of the applicant Lunch Break. Um, uh, the application before you, the C thing pertains to Lunch Break's uh, headquarters located at one twenty-one Dr. James Parker Boulevard here in town. Um, some of the board members uh, uh, will call that uh, it was a more significant application that was heard at uh, in two thousand twenty-one for expansion of Lunch Break's current location. Uh, was approved, thank you, uh, and uh, that expansion is currently under construction and uh, hopefully will be completed by uh, the end of the year, all goes well. Um, and uh, what we're here for this evening is nothing to do with any changes or anything to do with that aspect of the application. Rather, what we're here for is an application for signage, uh, to go on the, on the brand new uh, uh, headquarters for Lunch Break. Most or if not all of you are familiar with Lunch Break's mission, uh, so I won't, I won't go through that again. But um, but basically, uh, at the time that we bought uh, the prior application for the expansion, the, the signage package, if you will, was not finalized. And so over the course of time, uh, uh, we've come to understand and finalize exactly the type of signage we need. Your ordinance, uh, your ordinance has certain restrictions and guidelines with respect to signage in terms of size, of their location, uh, and so forth. And so, um, you know, we don't, we don't, we're not, what we're proposing doesn't apply with your ordinance requirements to the letter with regard to signage. Um, and I had with me this evening, the project architect Eric Wagner, who walked the board through the specifics of what's proposed as part of the sign package. And I also have with me, White Lord Love, who's the all-time executive director uh, for Lunch Break. Um, to address the board on any question or issues that they have. But just to sort of put it in a nutshell, um, uh, in the B R two zone in which this property is located, ordinance permits a single facade sign, sign on, on the side of the building. Front of the building in this case. Um, this is, you know, it, it, it's not a residential building. It's a, it's a, it's a larger building. And so, uh, needs uh, primarily for directional and informational, um, are not consistent with a single sign. Uh, so what's proposed for you is uh, kind of splitting up that permitted signage, if you will, into four proposed signs in different locations uh, on the building. To avoid, uh, this, and and just in a nutshell, and and Mr. Wagner will go through it in, in a little more detail. But basically, as you can see from the signage package and the plan that was submitted, there are essentially two signs proposed over each entry door on the front, indicating, you know, what that entrance is for. Uh, there's a logo sign, a, a Lunch Break logo sign at the top of the building on the front. Uh, on front facade. And then there's a fourth sign proposed, which is a, which is kind of an electronic uh, informational type sign. Um, and there is also, you'll see on the plan, reference to a row. Uh, and that's gonna be a design that's gonna have some sort of artistic, artistic uh, significance or interest, if you will. That's a separate procedure, a separate application that goes directly to the Bay Area Council, but we included it in our plan, just so the board can have a full, you know, perspective as to what's being permitted. So, so in terms of the variances, right, that we need, um, it, it is the number of signs where we're proposing for, where one is permitted. Um, as a note, the total. Um, as a note, the total square footage that is permitted, uh, by your ordinance in in this zone. Um, we are well below that, even adding all of the four proposed signs together. So if we had put it all in one sign, we'd be in compliance with your square footage. It's just that we split it up throughout the building, and you'll see as, as Mr. Wagner walks through the plan, it's kind of obvious as to why we needed to do that. Um, so there's a variance for the number of signs, four where one is permitted. There's a variance associated with respect to the location of the Lunch Break, uh, logo, which is higher up on the building. That's permitted by by your ordinance. And then the last variance is with regard to that electronic, uh, informational sign, that's proposed, which is not allowed in the in the zone. Um, and in here, it's have the money as we go forward. Um, just sort of the thought process behind the electronic sign is really provide clients, uh, of Lunch Break with information. Okay, uh, you know. It is not unusual for some, for some clients of Lunch Break to not have access to a computer, for example, and so. You know, normally we would say, put the information on the website and people will find out, you know, things about time, cancellation of. Of functions, uh, or new functions, should they get any information out there to the clientele as to what, what they need to know? So, you know, it was deemed important from Lunch Break's perspective to add that type of informational sign, uh, and that's why it's proposed. Um, so that's kind of the application in nutshell, ask the board if there's any questions. Uh, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Wagner, uh, the autarx text staff forward, he'll walk the board through quickly the details of the application, and then we'll go from there.
That's fine, sounds great.
Hey, alright, if you could just state your name and business address and we'll swear you in.
Eric Wagner, twenty-one Peters Place, Red Bank.
And you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed architect? Alright, if you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, best you know how to help you got?
I do.
Okay.
Great, why don't you get the other guy, move that over. And Mr. Wagner, could you give us your professional credentials for a bunch of board members, so?
Yes, uh, I'm a, uh, been a licensed architect for thirty years now. My practice has been in Red Bank that entire time. Um, I'm licensed in New Jersey, New York, and Florida. I'm a former, uh, president of the State Society, uh, in New Jersey. I've testified before, uh, many zoning and planning boards, including, uh, this this board. I was the project architect and, uh, did the testimony for the original construction of the project that we brought here.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, thanks, great. Okay, so Eric, um, I see you have an exhibit there, which looks like, uh, an exact copy, uh, or a blow up. For, right, of what's been of the sign package that was submitted from the board, what's been marked as A two.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so Eric, uh, Kevin, we don't need to.
Yeah, I don't.
Alright, so referring to A, A two, if you could just real quickly walk the board through, uh. Uh, what's proposed in part of the sign package, uh, and in terms of size and location, I think that should be.
Sure, so if you're familiar, uh, this is a corner property, and we're only proposing signage on what we deemed the front of the building. Which is Dr. James Parker Boulevard, um, and that's the elevation in its entirety shown on the top of the page. This, uh, building now, we've added on to it to the east and the west, and the building is two hundred and fifteen feet long now. So as, uh, Mr. Brodsky had indicated, it's, um, we have some needs just by the size of the building. Um, the first one, we're called that a logo signage, that's the one that's outside of the height, allowable height. And really, that's, um, kind of just part of the decoration of the building, if you will, that'll have the, uh. The new logo of Lunch Break up there in the circle and the Norma Todd Lunch Break, uh, letters. She was the founder, and they want to honor her with that, but that's not directional, that's not, we don't see people. Who are trying to find this building, looking for that sign necessarily, that's just there. Um, so we, I don't see that as a difficulty or a problem because, because of the type, due to its height. Beyond that, then, we have two articulated entrances, they have, uh, roof canopies over them. This one actually is signed Lunch Break main entrance. Um, there's a nice, uh, entry porch there, and that entrance leads either into the dr- straight ahead into the dining room. Or to the left into the reception, the waiting area, which is the second, uh, entry down to the left, and that's life skills. And the way the building was set up, uh, life skills, uh, quite often has evening programs. This building can be closed essentially, except for that entrance, they go in that door, there's a stair and an elevator that goes upstairs. So they would come looking if they have an evening class, they might be told, come to the life skills entrance. So that's the, that's that entrance. And then finally, uh, the far westerly end, we're proposing the informational sign. Mr. Brodsky indicated it's a way to, uh, give the clients information about upcoming, upcoming events. Both relative to, uh, food bank and clothing drives and things like that. So it's a way to keep them updated with, otherwise, uh, we're, uh, might just go on the website to find that information. Um, in terms of overall area, uh, the area, the allowable area is signed based on. The signable area, which is up to, I think, twenty feet high or something, but it's, we get to count the entire length of the elevation. And so we would be allowed, uh, four hundred and seventy-seven square foot single sign. Um, but we're not anywhere, anywhere close to that. We're proposing the area of the four signs that we're requesting to be approved tonight, these total of seventy-nine square feet. Where four hundred and seventy-seven would be allowed. So we're only two point eight percent of the, uh, allowable area of signage. Although, again, we are testing for separate signs rather than one location.
And then Eric, just, uh, with regard to the electronic, uh, the informational sign. Um, that would be something that the 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 hours of that operation, that is, when it's on, would be considered to be. Hours of operation of Lunch Break would be.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty to five.
Yeah, eight thirty to five, uh, Monday through Friday would would be off on Sunday.
Off on Sunday, Saturday.
And then Saturday from eight thirty to noon. So.
Um, I'll just mention that this, uh, informational sign, the electric sign, I'm trying to sign the. The face of that sign is actually the same size as the middle school sign. Now, the middle school sign is taller because it's on a pedestal, and it has a large element on top of it, but the actual, uh, LED face. Same size as the one we proposed.
It it's a large sign up above, is that lit?
No.
No.
What about the other two, the two directional signs, are those illuminated with lights on them or in the?
Uh, no.
And any, any questions from the board for Mr. Wagner?
Yes, the, um, circular sign for the logo, what's the logo? Yeah, it would be that.
Um.
And will that be lit or backlit?
No, no, it it won't be lit, it'll just be a graphic, and, uh, it hasn't been finalized yet, but this is the Lunch Break logo. Can you see it?
Will it be lit?
No, it's not.
Will it be, will it be, uh?
Neither, neither internally lit or externally.
And it'll have some of the lettering.
It'll have the lettering.
Marking that in evidence?
In metal, metal letters, but, um, no, just, um, I'll propose like.
Just go ahead and not have this marked.
Sure, it's A four, and what is A four? That is the Lunch Break logo.
Lunch Break logo.
That is going to be in the top sign?
Yes, we're showing, we're showing the circle up there, and that's, this is the graphic that we're proposing.
Thank you.
And I'm a little bit concerned about the electronic sign, sign number four. That would be informational?
Yes.
Eight. Seven inches. And it would be like a rolling sign, um.
Well, you, you, uh.
The one at the middle school, I believe, is lit and can be multicolors and. I'm concerned because you're in an intersection where you have a store to your rear, you have a gymnasium on the other side, which is, I think. I don't think they have any real external lights over there.
You, you know, you will not be able to see this sign from the, uh, I guess it's a basketball, uh, training, but you, this is gonna be visible from that location. Um, there are regula- there are regulations, um, showing a letter indicated there's rules, it can't be rolling, it can't. Put up words like stop, or things like that, so we can certainly, uh, assure you that it would be compliant with all the regulations.
Will, will that sign have, uh, graphics, you know, artwork, or just text or?
It, it wouldn't, it would be an LED, I mean, it's, it's essentially, yes, it would have the ability, so. Somebody has to input that type of thing, um, so.
Right, but, but, but it, but as you see in, uh, Shawna's report, uh, we would comply with that, uh. Let's say applicant shall not animate the display LED screen. The LED screen shall not utilize reflection enhanced or fluorescent colors or contain any visuals that sparkle, reflect, or glitter. And the LED screen shall not show words such as stop, look, caution, danger, or similar wording, which may confuse or dislead the public.
What I'm concerned about, confusing this new public, what I'm concerned about is that intersection, there are cars coming from four directions. Um, I think there's two crosswalks there now, and the temptation to stop and look and see what's on the sign. Might be very strong, that's what I'm concerned, I mean, I think you need the sign.
Yeah.
I'm just not sure about that location, because of the direction from Bridge Avenue. And coming into Dr. Parker's store. I think it's, I think it's a distraction.
I, I guess it would be visible from Bridge, but it's pretty far to the left, I mean, you have Bridge, Bridge. T's not at, at the road, it's T's at the training facility, and then you make the click left, click right, and our sign is further to the left.
People coming down Dr. Parker's ready to make a left into South Bridge. I mean, all the sign with information.
I, I, um, I would just kind of point to the middle school sign, it's in a more prominent traffic location than this by far.
But that is a stoplight. This, this intersection is not at a stoplight.
Yeah.
It's not, we're not even working with a four-way stop there yet.
Yeah, I don't know if if there's another location, I mean, this is the one that seems to make sense, and that's where it would be available. We do want it, we do want to leave rooms for the mural, because that's gonna have some.
Is the intent of this sign to? Let people know as they're driving by what's going on, or is the intent to have people walk up there and see what's going on?
I, I think that's, I mean, that is the intent, we could, right? Maybe we'll have Ms. Love up over in that firewater, maybe if they could. They can small, so somebody walking up can read it, but somebody driving.
Oh, I, I just have one question for the architect, um, is it this, like, a screen like? This monitor here, or the one that's like out in the hallway, are we, I'm just trying to get a visual?
Well, it would look exalted, you would see the little pinpoints, it's not as smooth as as a TV.
Right.
Monitor on the wall, but they're fairly sophisticated now, I mean, by the time we, the project's done and we buy one, it might be able to have features even beyond, so. I mean, all of the warnings and caveats that are included in your letter certainly would be compliant with. The sign probably can do a lot more than I would think Lunch Break would use it.
And the height, I just, so if, what about lowering the height? Would that, I don't know, make a difference to, or is that like the perfect height for someone walking across the street?
It could come down a little bit, now, I know if you're familiar with it, um, the clients. Would, you know, are out in front of the building quite a bit, we do have a very nice covered porch now, so I think they'll enjoy that, but. There's, uh, a fair amount of foot traffic from, from the Lunch Break clients, so that's, that's our audience here. We weren't really, um, thinking about signage for traffic driving, but we could, could consider, um. Low- lowering the, um. We could consider lowering it down a little bit, we do have, uh, landscape planting along that wall, but. It could come down a little bit, that, that probably would, uh.
I don't.
Make it read more as a, you know, pedestrian sign.
Is the overhang for the porch over top of that light, that signage?
Oh.
Now, so it's a flat on the wall?
Yes, it's, the, the porch is in this area here.
Right, I see that.
And then beyond that to the right is basically a flat wall.
So they would be looking at it from the street?
Sidewalk.
From the sidewalk, okay.
What's the dimension to that sign, Eric?
Uh, that is, um.
Seven by three?
Yes, yes, seven feet by three feet, seven three.
Um, sorry, uh, just said it again, seven?
Seven feet, three inches wide. The, uh, by three feet.
The hours of the sign on the drawing are different to the ones that were quoted. The drawing.
Plan section five?
So it's eleven to seven AM, eleven PM, seven AM.
It was different than the hours you gave earlier, I just.
Spoke about it, and we, all we could live with is less hours than what we.
Do you, do you need anything for life skills in the evening?
Perhaps we should have a, a time limit on the signage, um, I mean, if it's, if you close it by, um, perhaps the signage to stop. Then I'm clockish. I don't, I don't know if it's better to have it on at night, or if it's better to have it on during traffic, heavy traffic hours.
Yeah, we, we were saying we would have it, fair enough, when we close, which would be, which would be five.
So the, uh, let's. There's a big advertising sign for the town of Red Bank a block away.
And.
No, and that, that runs all the time, and I find it very useful for events and the colors and everything, I live near there. I live near there, and it's very useful, it sounds like what you're doing is a sign about what's happening at the center that day. For the people that are coming.
That's right, so, let's have, let's have Gwen sworn in, so she can answer.
Alright, good evening and welcome to the Red Bank's on the board, if you could just, uh, state your name and business address, please?
My name is Whiton Love, Executive Director, and the business address is one twenty-one, Bakers, James Parker Boulevard, here in Red Bank.
Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide would be the truth, the best you know how to help you got?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Gwen, a lot of discussion about that sign, so, um, if you could just explain to the board, to all the project, the intention is. Well, I having that information, so I think.
But I, I think you were, pretty much what you were saying, like, is that, you know, we want, um, our clientele, um, to have the information. You know, before, a couple of all types of information, not just the outings that we're open, but, you know, when we have a registration for our different programs. We have a registration for, for holidays, a lot of times people miss things, even though we're passing out flyers, you know. People don't always have the, uh, access to the internet, we're always trying to get the word out. But we do have a lot of walkability and run up and down in front of our, our street, and a lot of these people are the people that we serve. And a lot of times they don't know, um, sometimes people come in and they didn't know that, well, we have food, we have clothes too. We have other programs, and so the idea was to, you know, communication is everything, so that they really know what we have, what we offer, you know. When it's time to register, you know, we want to do it, it wasn't English yet, it's Spanish, so that it was a very, um. Inclusive type of, uh, the information, um, of vehicle. Um, in terms of the hours, you know, we really were just, we want to be good neighbors, we understand about the, uh, the traffic. I don't think that that was as much a consideration as being a good neighbor, so we were saying, doesn't have to be on made at night, you know, things like that, so. We're open to the changes in terms of the hours, um, life skills will probably be open in the evenings a lot of times. Um, life skills will probably be open in the evenings a lot of times. Um, with the programming, um, but, you know, I'm open to saying, this is the time we cut it off, because the whole idea is that we're trying to attract. You know, the people that are working, something for, for daytime, that we know what we do. It may not know that this is the time to apply for this, and this is the time to apply for that, or we have a new program coming. You know, that, that type of thing, so it's purely informational, there will not be any. Need for graphics and things like that. Um, you know, we're going to have plenty of screens inside. For a, a lot of different things that we have going on as well, but. It's purely for information, so to let people know what we're doing, things, things, so. So they know that, you know, what we have is for them and, and we want them to take advantage of.
Um, the only thing I can add is that, you know, you've always maintained a great relationship with the police, I think with the, uh, traffic officer. Um, just to. Maintain and monitor, uh, the activity in that intersection. I think it's busy, I think it's a great idea to have a sign there. I'm just a little bit concerned about people making those moves. At that corner and then trying to see a sign with some information on it.
I think it's.
But, um, I think, I mean. I, I, I think it should probably be on a little bit, the evening after traffic does that, because people can see it. But, um, just to stay, you know, keep in contact with our police officers. And the traffic calming people.
Okay, that's a good.
I have, um, a question, you said it's not rolling, right, it's just, like, how, what is the text and then it'll just change to another text or? I know, it's not like, is it mov-, is it not moving, you're saying, is that what you're saying?
Never used one before, I, I, I can't really say. I, I don't, I, 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 I think that what we do now is that there's information for. The, the, was, was pertinent now, so, the thing that we're trying to get across is. It's time for the holiday, you know, food signup, and we're probably staying there, because that's what we're promoting. That day, um, but it, it could also be, you know, we have a total abundance of. Eggs that came in above and beyond, but we normally give out, and we want the community to know that. We have an abundance of eggs at this day. That you can come in and get, you know, extra eggs, it could be something like that, so it, it's, you know, it, it's really just for us to really blast out. What's needed for that, for that time, and it could be something that could stay for two or three days.
Oh, okay, that was, I didn't know if it was going to change and, you know.
Right.
Going, okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions from the board for Ms. Love? Any questions from the public for Ms. Love? Okay. Can bring the architect back to all areas to say that, yeah. Thank you. Okay, any questions from the board for the architect? Any questions for the public for this architect? Come on up.
Could you move your mic?
Uh, you know, we're just going to swear again, if you could just state your name and, and address, please?
Uh, Jim McCain, uh, fifteen Wilshire.
And how do you spell McCain?
M C C A N.
M C C?
A N.
A N, and, all right, I'm just going to swear you in, I am. Oh, A I N. Uh, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the essential providing will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, I hope you got it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, I had a question, uh, the sign is going to run on a weekend?
Um, I mean. Uh, Ms. Love testified that it would be on only for half the day on Saturday, but it'd be a lot of people on the whole Sunday.
And, um. Yeah, I guess that's it for now. Do I voice my concern about having?
Yeah, we'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
In fact, we, we can do that right now, we can open up to comments, so, do you, you have a comment to make?
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the aesthetic of the LED sign, I just think that. I don't know, it might not look the best, and. I just purchased the house where I live more, so. Concerned about that.
Well, you know, there's, there's, uh, been a lot of time and. Fundraising and money and planning and design into the, uh. Design of this building. And, uh, it's, that certainly is not going to be thrown to the wind by putting, uh. The sign.
I don't know, it seemed that not aesthetic, that LED sign in the park. Uh, by Coffee Crowe is kind of, I don't know, cheesy to, to me, so I just, if it's like low resolution or, you know. It's just going to be. I just think it's going to just be a little doggy, kind of like the flashing LED.
Well, it's allowed to flash, um, and again, these things, you can program them, you, you were asking about how they change. You can have them fade out to black and then the other one comes up from black when you're changing. Uh, it doesn't have to be color, it can, it can be, uh. White background with navy blue letters or something like that, you know, there's a lot of. Ability for input, um. It's a computer base, so obviously they're bringing it on a computer button, I think. Your, uh, sentiment, your concerns, probably, I, I can assure you, they will be taken into account and when they're. Deciding how to program displays and what to show. You know, like, I think.
And I, isn't, uh, the border, I. In the plans, it's, um, that there, the border is going to be a decorative border, um, around. The trim of the sign. Um. Uh, the LED sign would be a decorative trim, that's what I saw on the plans, I thought I saw that.
Well, we, we just, it would have a black frame, we're proposing a black or it could be a dark.
It does read a decorative, it does read a decorative trim similar to the windows, I agree, on the plan. It's trimmed out exactly as the windows are. So I would also, yeah, I also think that it had a decorative trim also.
Okay, I'm sorry, the decorative part, there's no style, the, the trim on the building is, uh, flat, one by six or one by four. Yes, it would be trimmed, but. I, I just, the word decorative, I didn't apply that, but no, it would, it would look built in and won't look slap on the building. And, um. You know, if you're not, if you're unhappy with the way that the, uh, graphics looked. I'm sure that, uh, lunch break would take that into account, stop by. Like that, have lunch. And, uh. You know, they'll go listen to.
And keep in mind, you know, the intent behind this is not. What might be the intent of, of, of other signs, which is catching people die to try and, you know, say, hey, come stop here or come. Notice us, it's for to insert a function, a service, basically the. Clientele who are, you know, already coming to the site, but, uh, it should be provided.
And, and this will be specifically for lunch break, no other advertising from any other.
Specific for lunch, for lunch break and, like, you know, of course lunch break would be open if the borough had an announcement. It wanted to get out to people in some emergency or some other function and if. You know, lunch breaks always cooperative with the borough, if the borough said, hey, can you post that, uh. We're having some events or something, lunch break would always be open doing that, but no sale, no advertising, no outside, uh. Information or advertisements whatsoever.
I'm just curious, I have a couple of questions.
Turn on your mic.
How many of these types of signs are there throughout town, I mean, I know the middle school, and we have the Oxford First Building, right, has that. Signage that goes across, that we have the one by the, we have the one at the Coffee Corral. And now we have this one, would it be the fourth, am I missing any?
I'm, I'm right.
And then I'm also a little concerned, because, um, you know, admittedly, we don't know. The power, for lack of a better word, of the sign itself, whether it flashes, but you said it won't flash. Right? And then the colors, you know, I guess the settings with the colors, I'm some, I have the same concerns that Ms. Lee has, as approaching that intersection, which is a confusing intersection, to say the least. So if that thing changes colors at a certain time, I don't know, it seems like a, it could confuse drivers who aren't familiar with that area even more than it's confusing for people who live in the area, quite frankly. Um, and then I guess the other concern is, you know, is this open enough for the library, does it open up for the other buildings around town that have fluorescent LEDs? You know, strewn about somewhere on their property to provide the information, so I am a little concerned about that as well. Do you have any, can you address that?
I can address that, you know, and, and I think Mr. Kennedy will, will tell you that. There's no concern of setting a precedent, you know, each application stands on its own.
Hmm.
Uh, lunch break is obviously a unique type of use. And, um, you know, so. I don't believe that anyone can argue, well, you gave lunch break the right to have a, uh. To have an electronic sign, therefore we are entitled to it, I think Mr. Kennedy would. Um, agree with that point. Um.
Well, I do agree with that as well, the only reason I bring it up is because, um. I'm sorry, sir, but he had brought up the middle school. So he had said, well, the middle school has one, right, so.
Yeah, I think.
That's the only reason why I brought it up.
If you give some perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I referenced the middle school, uh, from a size point of view, I.
Okay.
Because most people are, are familiar with it, so a frame of reference of the size.
Okay.
Certainly, this project stands on its own.
Yeah.
I got, I got a question, I, it sounds like there's some concern about it being close to the intersection, that building's two hundred feet long, could be. Put away from the intersection.
But we, we have the, um, mural proposed at the other end of the building, so that kind of takes up. That the mural is down here, the, uh, our Easterland. And then in the middle, you see we have windows and, and doors and entrances and things, so. Um. It's possible we could shift it further away from the corner, um. We, we kind of found a place between two windows of white wall up there, um. I think it's better on this elevation than around the corner. You could talk about some signs or thoughts on signage around the corner. Signs we wouldn't.
Yeah. Well, is it possible to put it in the, and, and I'm just asking, Gwen, I don't know how large. The mural is going to be, is it possible to move it to that side and?
I'm sorry, why don't you speak into the mic just so we pick you up?
I think the area of the side where the mural is going is already being pressed. For a special board, is that correct, um, Eric?
Yes, there's actually smoother siding in that, in that location, so.
What is that right there?
It's, uh, that's electrical gear that's hidden by a screen fence.
What about the west side of the building?
Well, that's around the corner.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a great place, everyone walks through there. I was just wondering what was proposed on the west side of the building, because I wasn't given the plans in advance.
We don't have any signage for the west side.
Is, is that a, is that a viable place? Because you're still getting that walkability of your clientele at the sidewalk. And also not getting direct attention from that intersection, which I agree is too much. Um.
I guess the concern would be if you have clientele walking from the east towards the building, they would never go around the corner. Because the entrances are here. So it, it would be less effective in terms of numbers of people that would see it, I would think, but.
Could it be moved directly onto the left of that window? Yeah.
It, it could, it could be moved down here, yes. The, um, this is a flat, uh, image, so you don't realize that this element or tubes comes forward. There's four kind of base of the building. So when, when you're walking from this direction, you wouldn't see it till you got around, I mean, you can see through the porch to the steps, but. Wouldn't really be able to see the sign till you got past it and looked at it right there.
Is the space? So I'm looking at the space next to the lifestyle door, the door for the lifestyle. That little, there's a small window and then another large window. Is there space in between that area right there to fit it, maybe?
That would be pretty crowded, I mean, it, it, it probably could be made to fit there, but. Again, this element stands forward, um, so you wouldn't. Over here, you wouldn't really see it in a way, it's kind of around the corner. No, we don't have this, we don't have the, you know, west side of the building shown. Uh, you know, directly around this corner. You can have it, I think.
Well, well, west, coming, Steve, I'm sorry. Coming into that from the west side of the building, you still got people taking your attention off of the intersection, onto the sign.
Yes, I, I would be concerned that, that around that corner on the west wall will be even more visible from, from coming up bridge. So, I, I think maybe we'll be down.
How about to the direct right of the mural, there's eight feet there. Right next to the mural. Yeah, there's eight foot one inch there, the sign's seven foot three.
And with.
You know, maybe we make it a smaller than it is proposed right now, and drop the height gap. At that point, if it's, if it's. It's going to have a more of a pedestrian feel to it.
I think the whole building in and of itself is new to everybody anyway, so they have to get used to the positioning of, you know, where the doors, like, they would learn. Where the sign goes, do you know what I mean?
Yes.
That's like, you know, the whole, the whole building they have to get used to.
You put it.
Well, we have, uh, no, because we have, um. Electrical panel. There's electric gear and then we have a screen fence, so that's a swinging, those, those fences swing open, and I think if you put it above it. It would really, really. Not be nearly as visible, especially for pedestrians.
You know, I would just say, I, I don't love digital, I share your aesthetic opinion of digital signs, but I do think the, uh. The ability to put information out for the lunch break clients is a pretty compelling argument, um. So in, in, you know, on the, on the whole, I'm kind of favorable.
I think it might be an opportunity for us to engage with, partner with the, um. Traffic police, the detective in charge of that. And have a conversation with someone who actually deals with day-to-day contract traffic at that intersection. And maybe we can get some suggestions, I don't think anybody appears against it, we all want this information out there, we all want to get to. Patrons. But, again, that is an intersection that is not monitored by. All the other intersections where we have these flashing signs are stoplights, there's stoplights. And people are stopping in traffic and have the opportunity to look at a stoplight. This is going to be completely different, this is moving traffic. And moving information, and it's good information and we want it out there, we just have to figure out how to get there, and I think the best way is to give professionals to give us advice.
But we could, um, the wall's up now, we have some fencing in the way and things like that, we could mock up. Panel size and location, we were proposing that.
Yeah.
Put it on the wall. Um, and then have the. Police Department, traffic people come out and look at it, and we could.
Yeah, I think, I think they can give you some advice before you go through running the data cable or whatever else that they need, I think they can now, so give us some awesome advice and.
Yeah.
And, um. Can we hold on that part, or, or do you have suggestions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I was wondering, maybe, um. If we could, if the board is inclined to approve it, i- i- but in a location to be agreed upon. Rather than having to come back, maybe if, if, if the resolution to be conditioned on. A location subject to the, uh, review and approval of traffic safety. You know, you're, if that's going to be something like that, just to avoid having to come back.
I would, respectfully, I would just be a little concerned that the board's not approved something, not knowing where it was going to go, I don't know if the board member would feel comfortable with that or, or not, that, that would be my, my concern.
Um, I mean, Kevin.
Or we can just, uh, do it.
Kevin, can we, like, can they remove that from? The application, maybe? And then we can, I don't know, come back, do another. Do an amended, uh. Amendment to this application, once you guys figure it out. Do an amended amendment to this application, once you guys figure it out, get some.
I I mean, we have a couple of options and and there's no better option or worse option, it's all what you all want. I mean, number one, and I didn't mean uh to speak for the board, because I'm just a board member, I mean, the board attorney. But if if you were okay with approving it, not knowing, then the the exact location, that would be presumably okay. You can approve it subject to the traffic safety officer uh reviewing and approving location. Or if you wanted to see his or her comments first. And also you could approve it, subject to the whatever changes being made. And then the other thing is, just in the back of our minds, know that one option would be, let's just say the application got approved tonight. Don't know if it's going to, but if it did, they would uh, the resolution of memorializing the approval would be adopted at the next month's meeting. If if the board was inclined to, you know, in recognition of the fact that it is lunch break and et cetera. Um you could um authorize me to have a resolution of approval done in advance. Provided that they get the information and they get it in time and they come back and and you're okay with the location. Maybe you don't even need testimony, I don't know, but I could have the resolution done if that's, again, not the normal situation or the typical situation. But we would do that if if you want wanted to, you know, to make everyone get a feeling of satisfaction. Uh Shauna's option was we'll take that part out of it for now and and deal with it later. That would be an option too, if that's acceptable to the board and 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 Shawna, you're saying if everything else approved, the other aspects, the other signs, but not the electronic one.
Right, uh that they like withdraw that that. Uh sign from the application and then come back later and we'll do an amended approval to, I don't know.
Well, you know, we're always ease and all that, we're always gonna give either donor dollars, we won't have that here. And so we're trying to. Be mindful of that, so.
Well, maybe, maybe you could just come up with some different options.
Right.
Like again, like we brought the other signs right now, just come up with different options of maybe a little smaller. Put it in in a little different place in that corner where it seems to be a lot of concern.
Yeah.
I I think I I would I would feel really, I mean, I'm fine with the sign in a way, I just would feel more comfortable if we had. Park the uh street traffic control under uh some. Some response from our traffic control officers. I think that they can give us the best information, they know the accident rate of that corner, they know what distracts people. And I think we need to take that into consideration and what may need to happen is some rules around. They are probably the best ones to give us the timing that that should be on. They are probably the best ones to give us the sizing. Um.
I I don't know that there's any. Um. Si- serious rush on getting approval on the signage, are we at the point where we'd be installing the other signs? Within the next thirty days?
Well, um no, I mean, we, you know, if we can wait, if we have to wait, we'll wait.
I mean, it it sounds like maybe we just carry it, right, to the next meeting in and between now and then. Set up a meeting with the traffic uh traffic safety. And then. Take whatever we get from them and then figure out if there's another location or something that could be done or. And back in a month, I guess, sounds like that's probably the only way it'll work.
That is a bad intersection, one, now you have a sign that's.
Right, right. But I think that right, we're here, I mean, and you know, we agree that we want to get the information out there, maybe we can find another location and consult with the tra- traffic safety.
Also, in addition to the mockup, are there any spec sheets for this particular um sign? I've put up large signs on buildings and sometimes what happens after the fact is the lumens are too bright. And yeah, I drive down Newman Springs Road, it's a really, really bright sign right above the walk in there, and I'm like, wow, that's really bright. So in addition to a physical mockup, is there like a spec sheet or something that could be brought in saying, this is the particular light? This is the size, we could all look at it and say, oh, this sign is nothing, or the sign is a blasted TV and it's too bright.
Like a color rendering or something like.
Yeah, actually pictures of.
Exactly.
For real life one.
Yeah.
Like if you spec it out, I'll find one, take a picture of it, drive past it, be like, oh, this isn't the one on Coffee Corral. Which I agree is, you know, I love all of the information on it, but yeah, it's a little, it's just could be updated. But how bright could this sign be, am I driving down Newman Springs Road and seeing that in bright light? Or is it something more subdued, white, like they said with blue lettering that we could try buying, it would almost look like a regular sign, but it was backlit? Like really nice against that facade, it would be beautiful.
I I think the difficulty here is they are so sophisticated, so if you think about TV in your home, it can be. Almost black, you know, maybe a couple of small white letters on it, or it can be something really bright.
Yeah, and we get parameters for from this time to this time, this brightness is too much from this time to this time, and it's all programmable, like you said. So during the day, it could be at a different, it could be, it could be very valuable, even during the day, it could be valuable in those settings. You know, but a constant, we don't know how bright it'll be, we don't know what it'll look like on that corner, you know, kids are walking home from school at three o'clock. You know, and I'm very distracted in that intersection, and I've lived here quite a while, you know, so.
Yeah, I I to show you specs on it, it's it's more what is programmed than what is set through the computer to be on display. Right, I'm sure it can be dim, it can be bright, it can be any color combination, it could be dark letters on a light background, vice versa.
But it's already been selected, right?
But well, no, it's a it's an electronic sign, so any in, you can input anything you want through the computer.
Oh, no, I know, but have you picked the specific one that you'd like to buy?
The model.
Model.
Well, we have one, we have one.
One you wanna buy.
That we, yes, but in terms of this um. They could tell you how bright it could show, but we would say we would never make it that bright, you know, so it's.
You would say we'd never, but that's what I mean about the parameters, like we know it could be the brightest it could be, but we will set it between this rating and this rating. At these times of the day, I think that would be really valuable to know.
Yeah, I I think um there would be some trial and error there. Um where literally, there's some people are standing out on the corner and say, yeah, no, that's too bright, that's no good, I would, that's fine and. Um. I I'm sure lu- uh Lunch Break would would agree to getting that program to a point where everybody's happy with it. Um you know, once the size and location is determined and is put up on the wall. What what do we like best, do we like the dark background, light letters, et cetera? Just cycle through limitless options. Um. I don't think ahead of time, it's not like saying it's gonna be a blue sign. It's it's anything, it's. You know, infinitely adjustable, so. I think what Lunch Break will do, we find one that's pleasing, hopefully everybody uh is okay with it at that point. And then that's what they would use and cycle through the uh signage. As Gwen mentioned, I mean, it's a lot of times it might be the same, it'll be the same sign up all day long. Telling people what time Thanksgiving dinner is going to be.
So so it's if, so so I understand, we're gonna submit specs of, that's gonna show the capabilities. And then of what whatever one we're proposing and then.
Do like a mockup maybe?
No, but then, and then what, we're gonna have some analysis done by someone on the board to tell us.
The traffic, the traffic safety.
I mean, they might be more aware of what of what would be, I would I would lean on the traffic safety hard. They might be in a, oh, a light at this bright would be distracting, you know, or. You know, peel back, because like you said, it is adjustable to anything, I'm sorry, anybody, even even as you install it, you'll put it in, you'll be like, this is too bright. And then and then you pull back, but I'd like to know the model of it, see the capability, see if it maybe even can change throughout the times of day. I think that'd be really beneficial to your clients also.
Right.
You know, let's see which one you're picking, are you picking the one at Coffee Corral? Or are you picking something more manageable, something that we can all.
Right.
Talk about, I think it's a great thing to have, I just don't want it to be the one on Newman Springs Road that flashes in your eyes like the whole night.
My my concern there would be, again, that's a programming issue. That that one on Newman Springs Road, it's so garish, could easily be programmed to be. Hung down, so it's not necessarily the model number, maybe I'm gonna show you the same exact model number as the one out there.
Knowing it's, knowing you can pull it back, yes. No, absolutely, it might be very similar to that one, yeah.
I think they all are, in terms of capability, they're all very similar now. It's a matter of how they're used.
So. Okay, so we're gonna get that, we're gonna get with the traffic consultant or traffic safety. We're gonna give traffic safety the model number of what we're proposing to use, see if they. And can give us feedback as to what brightness is okay with them.
And even the size, we discussed them being valuable even for the size of it too. So the brightness and the size, how do you got, what do you guys think about having it on this corner? You know, per the last few years, I'm not sure how they.
Right.
They analyze the traffic at that corner, I only know from walking it with my son, you know, so.
And hopefully, they'll give Shauna some type of written memo. When 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 they're completed, that we can all review and mark into the record as evidence.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's against a sign for lunch break, lunch break is below. A a wonderful organization I have in Red Bank, it does great things and. You know, and there's just a safety concern, I think, for the most part.
Understood, understood, okay, so what is that, what was that date?
Sixteen, seventeen?
August seventeen.
Is that gonna be enough time for you?
We're gonna do our best.
Okay.
Okay, and Shauna, we can, I'll be in contact with you in terms of getting uh whoever the right person is in traffic.
Okay, so what we'll do then, if before anyone leaves, we're gonna, um if it's acceptable, we'll make a motion to carry this application to August seventeenth. Two thousand twenty-three, six thirty PM, without the need for any further public notice. Uh Mr. Brodsky, do you on behalf of your client consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act?
Yeah.
Okay, and for James in the back, you're not gonna get another notice, so just mark it on your calendar to come back, if you're interested to come back August seventeenth. Um so, Mr. Chairman, if someone could make a motion to carry this.
I'll make the motion, carry this.
A second. And we can do it all in favor.
All in favor?
I I think.
Both.
Motion.
Any public comment for non-agenda items?
I just wanted to thank all the volunteers here, first time I'm here as a council member. Uh so honored that you all take in your seats and it's great to be here tonight, see you all this morning. And to advocate for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me, I made it. Oh, wait, I'm. Okay, I already said it first, I don't know who said it.
First was Sileen.
I gotta say.
I know, I know. And then all in face. All in favor to end this meeting, please?
Thanks, Mina.
Yes.
Thanks, Mina.
Section. I don't know, I.
You petition the Borough Council.
Okay.
Um and and you you might start off with a card.
Okay.
Um, hey, councilman?
The council has a.
Right there.
And you gotta start up the food chain, uh but but there's there's.